I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, students. Paul and Roll, our district attorney. Tony Peters is on his way. I think he is going to try to call in before he gets here. Supervisor Tinkelman is here. Supervisor Banks is also going to call in on the phone, I believe. I'm here. Supervisor Guy is here. Supervisor Flay, our district manager, Shemerson, and Stephen Love and Bloom, our CPA from Inco. I believe we're going to start with the school.
School board presentation.
You ready to present?
And the county school board wanted to make an updated presentation on their progress at the school today, so we put them up front so they wouldn't have to wait. And I'll let them do the introductions when we have a presentation.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us to come and give you an update. I'm Kathy Heavon, the executive director of facility planning and development for the school district. And I'm going to quickly turn it over to our lead architect on this and have him walk me through the presentation. Well, actually, before I do that, I do want to ask Nikki to stand up, Nikita Watson. Do you want to come up here for a second? She is your proud principal of our new school, so I wanted to introduce her to you. She's really, she was just appointed just a little while ago, and she's so excited and has been energetically involving herself in every component of this, so I'm sure she's very excited to be working with you as we board.
I'm Brian Lee with BSW Architects, we're the design architect for the high school and the project. This was the prototype that we did down in Vito High School. This high school will be doing the three-story version. As you can see here, this is our parent pickup and drop-off line. As you can see, as it comes around, that to your left is going to be Griffin Road. As you come around, what we've done on the site is we've separated the parent pickup and drop-off. As we come around the back, we would have a separate entrance exit for our buses that would be at the back of the school. This would be separate from everything else on the site. As we come around the backside of the school, you can see we've maintained some buffers with the neighborhood on the backside with how we're coming around the athletic fields. On our left side, that's where we would have State Road 82, that's where we've located our baseball fields, our softball fields, football, and our practice facilities. You come around here, you can see better the entrance off of Griffin Road as you come into the site. On the right side, we have the teacher-parent parking. On the left side, we have student event parking and some overflow parking. As you can see, as you go into the school, the main building going in the front, that's what we call Building A. That's where we have our administration area, our main classrooms. The building on the left is our athletic building, gymnasium, cafeteria. The building on the right is our theater building with our black box theater for events. The design that we have here is the three buildings. What that allows the school district to do is for sporting events, they can open up the gym and not have to have people into the main school building. For theater events, they can open up the theater building and be able to lock down other buildings on campus. This is kind of in the design prototype going forward for the school district buildings on the high school. We, questions?
Go ahead.
Can you go back on the slide? I'm the engineer in the group, so I've got lots of questions.
Okay.
The video showed, and we talked in other meetings, that there would be a separate ingress-ingress for the buses coming in.
That's correct.
I didn't, the video went so fast, I was trying to figure out what direction I was looking in. I didn't figure it out as it was going. It looks like the buses are coming in on the southernmost portion of Griffin Drive. Are they going to enter and exit down there in that right hand?
Yes, they are.
So there will be a connection to Griffin Drive at that point for buses only?
Yes.
Will they go back out that same way?
Yes.
And then the last one is off of 82, what is your predominance of traffic flow of buses entering the property? Is it from the south or the north?
Dana Hewitt-Jompson, engineer, for the record. So the bus split is 80% is going to be coming from the east, 20% coming from the west. So the majority of the buses will be coming from the 82 signal.
I'd heard at one time maybe it was much as 90. I was concerned, still am concerned. That, is that going to be a single lane roundabout? Because you've got traffic coming in from the north on 82 that's going to be trying, school buses, that are going to be trying to get around that exit. The only thing I'm worried about is if it's at a time when the other cars are coming, you're going to queue up traffic someplace in a mess, and I hope it's not a roundabout.
I think what we.
You see what I'm talking about?
Yes.
If the predominance of your buses is coming, are coming from the north off 82, they've got to go through, as I see this, they've got to go through the roundabout to get to the turn to go in for where the buses go.
Correct.
And I just see that roundabout, if it were a dual-lane roundabout, I wouldn't be quite as worried, but it's a single, I'm thinking it's a single-lane roundabout, that's going to be tough.
So the west edge of the roundabout, the backside, is a dual lane.
Where you, but you have to merge.
So that, well, you can either merge and go into the school or continue right on past it.
So the cars coming out of the school in the afternoon and/or drop-offs in the morning that want to go south, are they going to be inter, are they going to be challenged by the buses in the roundabout?
They'll be intermingled with.
That event typically is over with within 12 minutes. You know, any of our high schools, the actual traffic from the parent pickup, no, I'll walk there with you and have a cup of coffee.
Is there a way, is there a way to have a ingress or a merge lane that accelerate? Such a thing as a way for an acceleration or a deceleration to give them longer access coming out of that to be able to merge back in?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I called it that.
Both going into the roundabout from the north and coming out of the roundabout to the south, instead of merging quickly back into a single-lane road? Is there a way to extend that?
It is, it has been extended.
Okay.
And on both sides.
I can't see it from here, so.
And as you come out of the school, if you're heading north, you can go, there's a slip lane that can take you directly out. You don't even have to get in.
That one doesn't bother me. The right turns are not the problem.
Right.
Our problem gateway is multiple left turns.
Right.
And you've, you talked about the queuing. We've designed our drop-off as a double-lane drop-off to help eliminate any issues of cars queuing coming back out on Griffin Road.
Right.
Thank you.
Can you tell me, is this a nine to 12 high school or a 10?
Well, high schools generally run from seven to basically.
Grade level.
Grade level. Grade level, I'm sorry.
The first bell rings at seven oh five.
It's a grade level.
Grade level.
Nine to 12, I'm sorry.
Nine to 12.
Yes, sir.
And how many students?
The student capacity will be 2,009 students.
Truth's out.
And nine.
Fewer, fewer, nine.
Yes, sir.
I have to ask this on behalf of the people who live at Hampton Park. The water flow off this property is going to be going into our Hampton Park addition.
Yes, sir.
What is going to be the control structure? As you know, that goes into a 24-inch pipe.
Yes.
Which we have limitations on flow. What is going to be the device that sits there such that the flow rate into that 24, which I'm going to guess what, 3.5, 3.8 CFS, that that number is not exceeded? Because we've got problems in Hampton Park.
Correct.
Serious problems in Hampton Park that we can't take any more water off this area than the permitted amount.
That must allow it. Correct. So we've been through the full water management permitting process. We've gotten their approval. The control structure will sit in this general area that ties into that 24-inch pipe. It's going to be controlled per the allowable discharge.
It's going to be an adjustable weir?
No, it's a fixed weir.
And how is that controlled because the water, more water comes in, it just goes higher and higher and higher over the weir?
But it can only go out that orifice so far.
Well, it's an orifice, not a weir.
It is, correct.
Oh, okay, okay.
Correct. So we are controlling all of our water on-site. It meets all of the water management criteria for discharge. And we are well aware of the challenges that are in Hampton Park, and all of that was taken into account.
Yeah, if we take the permitted amount, I don't have a problem with that at all. I just want to make sure that we don't get anything over the permitted amount.
Oh, no, sir. No, sir. Water management district would not permit, give us a permit to go over.
When do you anticipate clearing that property and beginning construction?
September 1st.
December?
September 1st.
Oh, you're almost done with permitting.
Again, two weeks.
Permitting's done. We just got board approval for the expenditure. The contract was signed by the superintendent shortly. Attain our bond and anticipate a construction by contract at least September 1st.
I don't know if it's a question that we can ask, but I'll ask it anyway. When you're building a school like this, and I've been experienced with a lot of schools, especially up north, is, they hardly ever come in on budget. What kind of a number do you have set aside for a contingency?
He was listening.
I was up north and it's state a little bit different than his. His had a lot of money, ours didn't. Is there, what kind of a contingency allowances in this school of this magnitude? I'm guessing like 90, 95 million bucks?
Sorry, it's 98 million, and it's based on a GMP that was hard bid, guaranteed maximum price. The school will be at 98 million. Of course, we have contingencies like any other project embedded in the project. I have a 2% contract GMP contingency that's shared by the construction manager in the school district. And I also have a 3% contingency that's strictly for the school district.
That's what I was looking for.
But bottom line is it will be, as the board approved, 98 million dollar total project cost. We gave them a guarantee of that. We do things a little differently here, and that is we have a phased approach. We actually designed and take all the VE in our phase one. We bring the GMP to the board after it has been publicly bid, advertised and bid, and once the bids are vetted and compiled, so it is a guaranteed maximum price.
When are you, have you gone out to bid already?
It's all done.
It's all done.
The GMP has been approved last night by the school board.
That is, Suffolk Construction. Suffolk Construction.
Yes, sir.
Take that of the schools in this area?
They're one of the largest school buildings.
They're here. We want to introduce them, please.
So I'm Shelley Peterson. I'll be the project executive, and this is Robbie Teedman. He'll be the project manager.
So all complaints go to Robbie. His number is.
Engineering 101. Your work.
I do have a question. After-school program things, would the buses still go in the same way and not?
The buses will always go into that back entrance. The buses will not come up front.
No, we do all say. So obviously, we're growing the property and developing.
At one time, there was a discussion to have a exit only to the east onto 82. Did that get mixed? Well, I don't understand that because now that being six lanes, putting that into that area to where you guys are at is almost like a no-brainer. What was it, a drainage issue?
FDOT. You've been down that road.
That just seemed to be, to be for ballgames and things like that, it would be unnatural to go east on 82. How did that deal with a couple of deceleration or acceleration lanes and be so simple? It's turned into a racetrack out there anyway, so maybe that's why they didn't let it.
Any other questions? Anything else that you wanted to share with us today?
Is for us or?
No, she's asking if there's anything else we want to share.
The only other thing we'd like to advise is that two weeks from tonight at 6 o'clock at Mar City Lakes Middle School from 6 to 8?
6 to 7 probably.
6 to 7. 6 to 7, we will have a public open house where the public can come and meet with the architect, meet with the Suffolk and the engineers and the school staff to ask questions about this. So we'll have a more extensive meeting two weeks from tonight at Mar City Lakes Middle School.
And when you anticipate the 2021 school year, the fall of 2021?
21.
21.
The school actually is opening a freshman class of portables behind Lehigh Senior in August of 2020. So they'll have a freshman class behind Lehigh Senior. And on August, July of 2021, we begin the mobilization into the new building. And right now, they're working on exactly how many grade levels of students will be in on the first year. That's a curriculum decision.
The goal is to open the whole school full. It is to open all four grades.
You got a name yet?
So Nikki, Nikki will be running or leading an effort with public input to both come up with a name and colors and that information and logo. And that will be coming out in the next few weeks?
Well, we can, we will share that in two weeks.
In two weeks, okay. So, but it will be a public process to go through that.
So can you get a chance to, like, could you almost sponsor us?
Any other questions for us?
Thank you, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Actually, I didn't sign up. Flavia Walsh, I'm actually on the board of Magnolia Lakes, and we have met before at the previous meeting. I heard you mention something about buffer. I was wondering if you can go into a little bit more detail since we are the community that will be boarding the school?
What we're trying to take into account on the backside is on the site plan, we've got, we've got it indicated as a 100-foot buffer all the way around. As you can see, that dotted line on the plan, that's why we've tried to make sure that buffer, the dark line is the property line. To the inside of that, we've got a dotted line all the way around the site, so that's the buffer that we provided there. But inside of that, we try to make sure all of the building elements are outside of that buffer area.
Where's the fence?
The fence would be up against the property line.
So we're going to have a chain fence over there?
It's a, it's a black vinyl fence we changed. It makes it somewhat invisible, and we put it on top of the bar.
Yep. Well, not all the way around. The black vinyl fence will be up along between the neighborhoods. That's not chain.
We'll have Constantine wire on top.
Only if needed.
You got to keep the residents out.
So originally, the fence, the gate fence for the school bus, it would start, if I'm correctly, on the third property that you see?
Right here.
Did you guys move that to the front?
No, the.
So it's still going to be the same?
The school fence, well, we've got the school fence here, we've got swing arm gates there.
Okay.
So that can be closed because we have to have an access there for utilities, but that can be locked off so to get the, nobody can get on that road. But the fence actually starts back at that line.
Okay, so the first three homes, property line, there will be no fence. Do we start after?
No, 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 that'll still be fence.
Oh, there will still, okay.
Yeah.
There'll be some additional gate, I guess.
Yes.
At the last meeting that we had here, the gentleman, who's no longer with you, any longer, had made a promise that that fence would go all the way to the end of our property. Is that correct?
It does.
Yes.
The black vinyl fence goes along the property line all the way down.
Correct.
So it hooks up like.
I can't say exactly to your fence. It goes all the way to our property line to the end. So what's the visual, though? Is it, are you knocking down all the trees?
Yes, we're clearing that site.
So what's dry detention?
Dry detention is where we store water and treat water, the runoff from the parking lot.
So there won't be any trees? We'll just be looking at buses?
You'll be looking at the building and a parking lot. The buses will only be there a few hours a day.
And then my second question, sorry, I bombarded. I noticed the sidewalk ends in Magnolia Lakes. I'm not sure if this question is for the board or for you guys. Are you planning on continuing that sidewalk? Because otherwise, kids would have to go across, so you will.
The sidewalk gets continued all the way to 82.
Okay.
So we're tying it in with the sidewalk that they built as part of the 82 construction.
And lights?
There are lights around the roundabout?
But no streetlights on the sidewalk as we have on the other side of Silver Lakes?
No.
Nothing yet?
Okay.
We have a pump station there.
Pump station is right up front?
Is that it, that little square down here?
Yes, yes, right at the very corner, right up front.
Excuse me, is that roundabout? Is that like from way at the end of our property and 82, is that roughly about halfway down?
Yes, it's about right in the middle.
About right in the middle.
Right in the middle of the school property is where the roundabout is at.
So we're not going to have any trees or anything to look at, just that, dry detention and the school?
It'll be the new school, yes.
And then one more question.
But isn't there some kind of law in Florida that you're supposed to put a certain amount of trees?
Not for the school.
What does a buffer look like where you have residential?
You'll have, you'll have a berm.
How high?
I believe at what, six feet, Dan?
No, I think it's more about.
You're talking about a three-story building, so. Four feet?
Right.
Could you point out the entrance to Hampton Park on that map?
Just right there.
Okay, thank you.
So the only, the last question on the fence, so knowing how the property is and how it slopes down and you're going to do the berm, is the idea to have the fence because of the height? So if you put it at the highest point, it'll be beneficial to Magnolia Lakes? But if you put it at the lowest point, a four-foot fence would be like two and a half?
Well, we have, it's a four-foot berm, earthen berm, to control all of our surface water, and then the fence will run along the top of the berm.
The top, okay.
And the berm is grassed. There's, it's rain tamed, so it'll be all grass.
Okay.
So the berm is at the end of our property line?
It will go down to the right-of-way line at Griffin and the property line.
It was this, you know how ours looks like this?
Yeah.
Theirs will look like that.
Correct, so ours will be higher.
It'll be equal.
It's a little bit of a select.
And was there any consideration when the State Route 82 project was underway to have all that traffic getting in and out off of 82 rather than in Gateway to back into Gateway? Because we're already suffering from, we can't even get out in the morning on the other side, and this is just going to close off the other side to us. We're talking about people going to work 6:30, 7 o'clock, and now we're going to face it on both ends.
Understood.
If you're a resident here, you would understand.
The, I do understand your question. The traffic, as it's associated with the high schools, they come at 6:30 in the morning till 7:15. And then there is no traffic going in and out of the school unless it's just a parent coming in and picking up their child. And then you've got another 15, 20-minute window in the afternoon where parents are coming in, picking up their kids, the buses are coming in, picking up the kids, and leaving. So there's two peak times that the schools operate at, and that's, and that's it. And we did our traffic analysis, provided it to the county, county agreed with it, and that's how we got to the design that we're at.
So the buses start arriving at 6:30?
About 6:30. About 6:30, that we, all the schools predominantly provide free nutrition and breakfast for the kids. So the buses come in at about 6:30. We've relocated our cafeteria over by the bus area. So they'll exit the bus, they'll get right in there, and then about, you'll see some people starting to drop their kids off between 6:30 and 7:00. And they too can come into the areas of the building to go to the cafeteria. And then I believe the official bell rings, if I'm not mistaken, at 7:05.
7:05.
And that's a standard for all of our high schools.
What was that 12-minute thing that you referenced before?
We actually vetted it out at South Fort Myers High School, which is on Plantation Boulevard. There are no lights, you know, the traffic over in that area. I wouldn't have believed it myself, except I sat out in the sun across the street. There's no traffic, no SROs or sheriffs to coordinate that. And both the buses and the students all exiting at the same time and teachers. And it was 12 minutes. We put it on our watches. I wouldn't have believed it. Now, what the county does is they extended the duration of those lights during that afternoon shift. So they made it a little bit more extended to allow buses to go. But if I, if someone told me they could do that in 12 minutes, I never would believe it. I was astounded.
It's not residential over there.
No, it's industrial, and between the hospital and everything else, they get a lot more traffic than what you guys have. And it was out of there lickety-split. Another place we looked at was Ida Bayer, which in your statement is not industrial, it is more residential. And again, in 12 minutes, it's cleared out. And that's with no traffic control device at either of the exit points from that high school. The closest traffic control device is actually at Plantation and Daniel.
Correct.
So, and that's with the two ballfields too, the practice stadium for the Twins. I don't know if those four are.
Are they showing up at the same time at 6:30?
No, they come from different routings. So that's their planned arrival time, so yeah, we want them to all get to that, bring to deliver the children to that school so they have time for breakfast. But are they all lined up 26, 25, 26 in a row at the exact same moment in time? No.
So it's kind of, that's what I'm confused about, the 12 minutes.
I said when they're leaving, not when they're arriving, when they leave.
Oh, when they leave.
Correct.
That really clears out 12 minutes.
That minute, it was a 12-minute.
Well, this is more like a half hour in the morning.
Correct, so it's sporadic. It's not jammed as tight as you would think.
Yeah, from 6:30 to 7:00.
Can you, can you tell me what your plan for these school buses?
I can't hear you.
You can't hear her.
What, I'll yell because I thought this was on. You can't, you still can't hear me?
I can hear that.
No, I can't.
What's your plan for the disposition of these school buses after they drop the students off? Where do, where do they go?
They leave and go, typically they begin another route, which is usually at the middle school or the elementary level.
Okay, but.
So they're exiting that site and they're picking up their next grade levels.
I think he's asking, will there be buses parked on the site?
There may be one or two. It depends on their shift and where they have to go. A lot of times you'll see buses parked in strip mall parking lots waiting for the correct time to go to.
I guess he means after school day is done.
No, there's no buses that park overnight on a high school campus. Unless it's a course to deliver, and in that evening, and they have a sports event off-site, and the band needs a couple buses, or maybe two that are parked there to take those children, and then after-school event to a game at another high school and so forth. But no, this is not a transportation parking spot, place, no.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate you having me.
Minimal. Obviously, you're going to hear some home football games, which I believe are usually paid-per-season home games. You know, there's going to be, there're going to be Friday night football for eight home games.
Get that where I want it.
If you've got rest. I can't tell you that. It's by student assignment. It's, it's, it's based on proximity and based on what the planning people, as the students come ready for that, is where they come from. It's the, obviously, it's proximity preference. Pardon me? I'm not going to answer your question for you. They come from proximity preference. So if a child in Hampton wants to go to the school, he's going to have proximity. If a young man, child wants to go, if they're going, it's coming from proximity. Now, that could be.
So we're well aware.
We're going to continue our regular meeting. If you want to continue discussion, please take it out to the lobby.
Although those buses will be coming through Gateway, which.
We don't bus kids with it too much.
Great, so add some authority. You have all the edges. We have one person signed up, Charles Shaffer, who might expect this.
You not start the regular meeting here?
Charles Shaffer, Hampton Park, concerned that 2019 to 2023 utility rate increase. At the second public hearing for the 2019 to 2023 public utility rate increase that was held April 4th, 2019, you were informed that the proposed schedule as presented to the public was incorrect. Specifically, irrigation tier one through tier three gallons allowance for commercial users was double the amount they were entitled to. Number two, the AWWA factor was not applied correctly for commercial ERC values.
Hey, hold on.
Okay, sorry.
All right. The board agreed there were errors and they would need to be corrected. At the end of the public meeting, the board unanimously voted to adopt the schedule as is with a separate hearing at a later date to amend and correct. This is in direct violation of the Florida Senate 2019. This is in viol, direct violation of the Florida Senate twenty nineteen Florida statute one ninety point oh three five paragraph two, which states, after such hearing, such schedules or schedules either as a newly proposed or as modified or amended may be finally adopted. You are in violation of this Florida statute as you did not amend before adopting. After the meeting, I informed Chris Schumaker that an official error was discovered in the schedule. Specifically, commercial water users only have two tiers of gallonage usage structures while residential users have five tiers. This results in commercial users cost cap at five dollars and ten cents per one thousand gallon, while the residential users' cost cap is double that amount at ten dollars and forty cents per one thousand gallon. Commercial users enjoy an incredible fifty percent savings in their water bill over their residential counterpart with the same size meter. The Florida Senate twenty nineteen Florida statute four ninety point oh three five paragraph three states, such rental fees and charges shall be just and equitable and uniform for all users of the same class. Allowing commercial users to save up to fifty percent on their water bill as opposed to residential users who have to pay full price, even though the meter size is the same, is not just equitable and uniform. Allowing commercial users to save up to sixty percent on their irrigation bill while residential payers or users pay full price is not just an equitable and uniform. You are in violation of this Florida statute as the charges are not just and equitable and uniform for all users of the same class. You are so focused on capturing that extra thirty to forty dollars in revenue per billing cycle for the approximately twenty percent of residents who in your opinion use too much irrigation water that you totally ignore the reality that you are losing thousands of dollars in revenue by giving commercial users enormous discounts. You handsomely reward commercial users while at the same time inflicting max pain on struggling families. You are penny wise and dollar foolish. Twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three utility rate schedule that was illegally adopted in violation of volume one ninety of the Florida seven, twenty nineteen Florida statutes is non-binding and the twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen utility rates still apply. Repunds to all users are in order from the period May first, twenty nineteen to a time as such proposed schedule is amended, republished and presented in a public hearing before adoption by resolution. A complaint for violating the Florida Senate twenty nineteen Florida statutes has been filed to the Florida Office of the Attorney General. Thank you.
And as I mentioned, I can just comment that I look forward to what the attorney general has to say. We don't have to go by AWWA standards and the commercial users burden by significantly higher meter fees that they pay besides the class and operation charges. So I appreciate the comments that Mr. Shaffer, Nate and I talk to on a regular basis. I'll stand by our rate study and our rates that were approved by the board, not only from utility operation perspective, but from a legal perspective. Those rates were reviewed by, now Mr. Peers, another utility attorney and a rate consultant that does rates throughout the state of Florida for another number of municipal and private clients.
And Chairman, Chris, do you have a copy of the complaint, the attorney general?
And so, did we get a copy of the service?
Well, I don't think it's certain, it turns out it wasn't involved in these matters, but I'd like to see a copy.
And, and the utility regulation, water wastewater regulation is done by the Florida Public Service Commission and we are not regulated by the Florida Public Service Commission because we own our system.
That's correct.
So the statutes that he's referring to are for utility systems regulated by the PSC and really have no bearing on what we do here.
Not the one today, but different ones. Okay, because the one today, eight to one ninety, if you're twenty to one ninety, that CED is if it's other than one ninety, it might be different story.
I welcome the examination.
Do we have any other speakers?
No, we do not have any other speakers, I believe Mr. Banks signed us.
He did, Mr. Let the record show, Mr. Banks called in at four twenty-nine. And that brings us to, uh, the amendment to the swimming HOA operations and maintenance agreement. Mr. Peers, would you like to?
Yes, ma'am chairman, thank you, I think I got the short shirt today, I think this is like blocking out. That wrapped it, I apologize, I had a battery problem in my car. Yes, well, this first amendment to the community development district systems and facilities operation maintenance agreement is for your consideration, recommended approval as part of the adoption of the resolution for Stony Brook designating streets of district streets and roads in Stony Brook as towaway zones. There was discussion as to the ability of the district manager to designate or authorization to act on perhaps of the district in that regard. And, uh, the point was brought up that perhaps the appropriate route would be also to amend the agreement the district has with Stony Brook in paragraph one of the amendment, would add language that would be that, uh, provide that as far as its functions of operating and maintaining the district streets and roads within the Stony Brook and Gateway Community, uh, the Stony Brook, which is the association is designated as an authorized agent of the district to contact the firm under contract with the district that's authorized by federal law to total remove vessels or vehicles for the removal of unauthorized vehicles or vessels in the designated towaway zones. The district will be contracting with a firm for towing services. And this will provide the ability of Stony Brook and Gateway, the master association to act as the district's authorized agent in those instances, unless the manager were to say that that is an authorized vehicle, I think the resolution indicates. Such things might be, the manager would say that is an authorized vehicle. And it's for your, for your consideration.
Since, since that last meeting, I've done a lot of researching on this stuff. In fact, I talked to a CDD in Polk County that is essentially very similar to Gateway in that they've got public roads in NHOA area. Uh, and was bringing up some of the issues that we're doing down here and got a little bit different story. This is why I wanted to get some clarification from Tony. The way they talked was that it, there is a prohibition against total, uh, uh, street parking, you can't do that. So are we, and I don't know that we got that answer at the last deal, are we going to have street parking on one side of the road or the other side of the road, but are, or are we talking about total prohibition? Because I understand that the way they talked and from their attorney, you can't do that. And the other one I heard is that you do that, you've got to get an ordinance approved by the county to do that. I'd like to have a clarification from Tony that that is the case. The other one is I asked who implements theirs and they said there's only one person who can implement it, has to be the district. Uh, and raised up the issue of giving that to the HOA, that you could get into some real legal issues, which would mean that if we're going to try to do that again legally, can we do it? If we legally can do that, that would be something in this agreement that would be a whole harmless clause that if there was anything done relative to selective enforceable. I don't want us to get in trouble over anything like that, if that's, if that, that, that could be protected by, in my opinion, in writing. And then the last one indicated that these were gated communities and she says, how do you do that? You can't have a gated community on a public road.
You didn't pursue that, I don't.
Huh? And her, her was that, are, we were going to do that and our attorney's advice is you cannot have a gated road, a gated deal on a public road, period.
We don't care about the road.
So, so we need a, we need a, it doesn't make any difference if that's a through road or not.
I guess.
Then I'll, hold on one more then, Tony, and then I'll let you go in. Then the other one, and this one I think would solve ninety-nine point nine, maybe even a hundred percent of the problems. They, for a change of deed, passed their, a component of their public roads in an area that was an over sixty-five component of their community and transferred it to the HOA. And I said, how did you do that? And she says, real easy, our attorney draw, drew up the paperwork and we did it. I said, we're of the understanding that that's illegal. So I would like to have that reexamined because if we could take and do that now, if there's been a change or something, uh, I would certainly like to take and offer that, it's complicated if I like, because you've got bonds, outstanding. But at Stony Brook, that could solve every one of our problems. We just simply deed over all the road right-of-ways to the HOA for a dollar bill. Anyway, I'll get Tony to go on.
Uh, there's a lot of items and issues that you mentioned, what's name did they make?
Lake. No, it's public road. That's the issue. I want to say it's Lake Estates, Polk County. Lakeside Landing, Community Development District, Polk County, Lakeside Landing. And their attorney is a law firm in, uh, she said it so fast, in Tallahassee, Popple, Popplehurst, something like that, Popplehurst.
Don't know that firm at all.
I, I didn't know him and she was in such a hurry, but I would like for, I'd love to get, uh, the answers because if there is something that, some of these things that they're saying is true, uh, what we approved at that last meeting, uh, we got some problems with.
A couple, so maybe I'll start backwards, as far as putting gates on public roads, there absolutely wouldn't be a lot of people. There are, if you look around, a number of the community development districts in this county and Lake County, Khyra County, are able to. They have gates on their plantation, if you go into Plantation, those are CED roads and there's gates on that. Paulie Comer's, Ilvers Creek, a number of others.
And they're all public roads?
They're all district roads, public roads, yeah. Uh, and, and so I, but this is very interesting, as far as giving a deed to a private entity of a district roadway, again, my opinion has not changed, I'm not aware of any change in statute, I'd like to talk to the attorney and how that occurred. Interestingly enough, down in Khyra County, there is a community development district called Key Marco. It, it's called Horrile, H O R R. Okay, after Captain, H O R R. Uh, and they, they changed, obviously, Key Marco for marketing purposes, very high-end community. And those roads are CED roads and they have been trying for years to come up with a way to give those roads to the CED, I mean, to the HOA. And it went through a number of attorneys, spent a lot of money and has been no resolution of the ability to do that, to have some change in the statutory scheme. So I'd like to talk to the attorney and see how they did that because I, I don't, my opinion has not changed and I'd like to understand how they did that. With regards to, when you said the, the district can adopt policies as to, uh, not having vehicles obstruct the flow of traffic, I think, and it can't do traffic enforcement. But as far as the district road, I mean, the opinion the district can provide for the towing of vehicles obstructing the flow of traffic on district roadways.
But, but that, but.
We're not, it's not, it's not issuing your traffic, it's just, hey, you're obstructing, you're interfering with the use of the district facility.
What, what, my question was more is, can all parking be banned from a road? Is that, I, I didn't, I don't think we got any answer to that at the last meeting. Are we going to have limited parking? Are we going to have unrestricted parking or are we going to have no parking whatsoever? Because the, the one I'm concerned about is the one where there is no parking whatsoever. Because then we're into the deal, what do you do about vendors and all that? Because I, I am of the opinion, you cannot be selective on who is parking, who doesn't.
With your eyes, the issue about the whole harnessing justification, that's, uh, not a bad idea, the board's inclined to do that. For the association as an agent of the district, it's not unusual for those to be in those type of agreements of other types. I'm not sure if I hit the right.
Well, I think the issue is, is that if, if this count, that's the, that was fish kind of associates there, the, uh, we call them the Severn Trent up there in that area, they do a lot of the CED district management functions. She said that they, when they did the CED, the rule was, was one-side parking. And she, her first question to me is what kind of a community do you have? I was trying to figure out, okay, where's this going? She says if they are all happy-go-lucky friendly people, you haven't got an issue. She said, we made a big mistake because we had the Hatfields and the McCoys living up here. The people that have the side of the road is the parking side got ticked when the people across the road did all their parking in front of their house and said if they were doing it again, they'd never get involved in this at all. But my question is, I don't know that we got a resolution of that at the last meeting. Are we banning all parking on the roads or are we doing one-side? What, what is the, the scheme that we're doing before we approve it?
I'll, I'll just tell you what's happening at the park. And that is vendors when they come in, because you've got the landscaping, the landscapers and those type vehicles. Even on county roads with combs, they're allowed to park temporarily because they're conducting business. You got the, the air conditioning repair guy, the plumber, those peoples, those are, those are, we're not going to try and even consider towing them, they're there on business and it's a short-term parking that they're there. They're not there all day, they're not.
But they don't get it, they don't get a permit or a paper when they come in?
What we're, that was one of the things that we're looking into doing, we're going to start, uh, providing vendor passes to those vendors that are coming in.
For, for the purpose of parking.
Right, for completely, you know, be completely different colors so that it's clear that this is a vendor. But you, you heard the issue that we had with the ambulance that couldn't get down the road and had to back up and go, turn around and go back the other way. And the people that aren't getting their mail delivered, because people, not vendors, residents are continually parking in front of their mailbox, trash isn't getting picked up. The same residents continually blocking the trash cans and the trash truck won't come and pick it up. And, um, I'll just say this, no one is chomping at the bit to tow. But for the people that are of the opinion, there's nothing that can be done to stop me from parking whenever I want, wherever I want. We want to be able to put them on notice to say, there is something we can do and we may tow your vehicle if you continue to violate the no parking signs. It's not that we want to rush out and start towing.
I see, I see. See, that, that's the part, that's the part that concerns me is if we have a rule, we enforce the rule, if we don't have a rule, we don't enforce it. Because then it becomes selective and then we end up with lawsuits.
Yeah, just, also just for information purposes, I pulled up the Lakeside Community Development District rule related to parking enforcement. And it says parking on district roadways is not permitted on roadways within the district area by declaring a total away zone. I mean, and I'll, I'll keep looking, but that's.
Yeah, she told me today that they park on one side and she wished they had done the whole, whole deal. She wished she had gotten involved in that one side.
But this makes it sound like it's a hall.
I didn't understand what I said.
Well, it's Pasco County, right, you're talking Pasco or Polk?
Polk.
I'm from, the only Lakeside.
She said Polk County.
Lakeside Landings, okay.
That's Lakeside, I'm sorry.
You got Lakeside Landings, I'm sorry.
I don't know, the county of Dapp, Dappinport, Florida, I don't know.
Oh, I know, that's a little bit of Nor.
I don't know which is.
Because I'm twenty-seven on the way up there.
Mrs. Tingle, go right ahead.
Okay, um, if you remember last meeting, I did ask the HOA president, um, questions and he says, we, they had to get the towing policy before they put out a policy for their, um, community. And what I understand, and once that policy is put up, I believe they bring it back to us. So I think Mr. Tingle's questions would be answered then.
And, you know, we'll get the HOA attorney involved, I'm sure he'll be in contact with Mr. Peers.
Who's that?
Deers.
Is it Deers? Okay, I know somebody spoke the same way, I apologize.
Sorry, yeah, go ahead.
I have another question, this was for attorney Peers.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, you weren't here early, so I couldn't ask you.
I apologize.
Okay, no, I understand, okay, my question is a legal question. This, the resolution was passed, okay, this is an amendment to the resolution. Are the, only the people who passed the resolution, who voted for it, can they vote? Are they the only people who can vote on this amendment because the resolution has already been passed?
This is not an amendment to the resolution, this is amendment to the operations and maintenance agreement that Stony Brook and Gateway has with gate resources.
Yeah, all board members are, have to vote on it if they're present.
Okay, I just wanted to. I just wanted to.
Madam.
Yeah.
May I ask our attorney, if we pass this amendment and if the Stonybrook, uh person, authorized person goes and backs, tow some cars and if some lawsuits start flying, who do you suspect is going to be the defendant instead of lawsuit?
There'd be probably two at least.
I'm.
Probably two defendants at least.
Namely?
The district and the association.
And my experience has been the attorneys for the plaintiffs will go after the deep pockets. That would be this organization, this Gateway Services, C D D, do you agree with that?
I'm not sure if we have deep pockets to the extent, depends upon the theory of the litigation. Say, if it's a lawsuit that's typical court in Florida, that we have, make a waiver of sovereign immunity up to a certain amount, three thousand per person, three thousand per incident and then to the extent we have insurance coverage, it might be additional money, but that. So it all depends upon the nature of the lawsuit.
You're not answering my question.
No, so I, so I don't, I don't know if it was a deep pocket or not, we'll be seen.